Welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the East Central Elementary School District Board of Trustees being held on September 17th, 2020, beginning at 6:30 PM. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil. Victor Garza.
Here.
James Moke.
Here.
Rodney Tresor. Steve Bryan.
Here.
Mr. President, may I have your call?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we'll move on to item two of prayer and prayers. Mr. Scott.
Trustees, we are very excited to welcome Tradition Elementary.
Good evening, President McAvoy, Superintendent Tuskama, and the East Central School Board community. I am Karen Pope as the principal of Tradition Elementary School. We are honored to be here representing Tradition Elementary this evening. I would like to introduce some of our tradition titans who will be saying their prayer and prayers for you this evening. The school will be recited by Brody and Lainy Longworth, and the president will be recited by Mia and Ryan Scott, Maya and Lee Perez, and Sidon and Sheraya Moore. Please bow your head to the court.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for blessing and guiding our school district this year. We pray that you continue to give strength to our school board, staff, and teachers with the new challenges daily. Please bless us, teachers, all teachers, friends, family, and the essential community. We pray that you continue to keep everyone safe and healthy. In your name we pray, amen.
Please stand for the court.
I look at the United States flag of the United States of America. It's true, our little rich hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please enjoy the following video that showcases Tradition Elementary working together to engage, encourage, and equip our students every minute, every day.
Brandon, did you have something to do with that?
Uh, no, that was Sam.
Oh, great, that was nice. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Appreciate that. We'll move on to item three, awards and recognition. Who do we have?
We have Brandon here today to kind of share some highlights from our latest edition of Ties of Pride, which, as you guys know, recognizes some of the things that are going on across the district, student staff, et cetera, on a very frequent basis. So, most recently, we had some really awesome Ties of Pride submissions, and Brandon wanted to highlight a few for the board this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Tuskama, for allowing me to adjust the awards and recognitions for our hardworking staff and students. The families will also be watching the video back too, as well. First, I'll start with Kaylee Drake. Kaylee is a ECH senior, ECHS senior. She exhibited her steer projects at the Lone Star Classic on the weekend of August 15th. After earning first place, she was named the breed champion. Next, we have Mike Sanchez and Garrett Neal. They received their welding certificates recently. Their certifications are legitimate, industry-recognized certifications recognized by the American Welding Society and National Center for Construction Educational Research. Nearly 90 students received an individual certification during the 2019-2020 school year. East Central ISD teachers, teachers from TK through 12 came together this summer to help get remote learning up and running. Through the curriculum coordinators and specialists' skillful facilitation, teachers created sample slide decks and began creating instructional videos for students to engage in during synchronous and asynchronous learning. We are celebrating over 1,200 videos completed for quarter-one instruction and are so thankful to the fantastic educators that came together to make this happen. Zach Tieran, he became a movie star on August 28th. The eighth-grade legacy middle school student appeared on News 4 San Antonio's Essay Living on August 28th to announce to the city that the day was National Boat Tie Day. Zach was dressed for success and represented the district well. And we have another movie star, Ms. Nina Alvarado, the free and reduced lunch clerk in the child nutrition department. She gave a television interview on Univision on September 4th. During the remote interview, she shared information about the district's meal services. And finally, we have Brody Pfizer, a sixth-grade student at Heritage Middle School. He gave his FFA speech on Temple Grandin for the State Fair of Texas. The seven-minute informative speech is part of the Texas Heritage Division. Great job, Brody.
All right, move on to item four, Club of Comments. Do we have any Club of Comments?
None, none here.
Almost grabbed that one off the list as well. Right on down the line, item number five, Superintendent before Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. First item in the report in your electronic packet, you'll have a document titled Educate South, and I just wanted to bring your attention, trustees, to this and a few other similar activities that have been going on in the last year that are starting to come to fruition. In the interest of ensuring that career on the south side of Bear County and in particular here East Central ISD, we're really promoting the college-only culture. There's been a lot of activity in the last year and a half around access. The Alamo Colleges launched the Album of Promise, which gives all of our graduates who complete the requirements, which 611 graduates in my students class did, to get an associate's degree paid for through the Alamo Colleges. And so, in an extension of that work, Palo Alto is working on a model to ensure that college doesn't start for families and students in their minds when they enter high school, but rather from pre-K till the time they're ready to go to college, that there's a lot of opportunities and experiences. And so, this particular model on the back is really paying attention to three big buckets. Exposure for when they're, from your time they're newborns until the time they enter school. Exploration, which are opportunities throughout their schooling to be engaged and to connect with experiences and folks associated with the community college. And then lastly, experience, which then begins to happen when they're at the high school level where they begin to have access to college credit-bearing courses while still in high school, so that they can be a successful college student before they graduate and then matriculate into college and be successful. And so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention because there's going to be several things that, in addition to the Album of Promise, in addition to Palo Alto's Educate South that are on the horizon, that are going to present really fantastic opportunities for higher education access and more importantly, success in higher education that is a really meaningful career opportunities for our students right here in East Central on the south side of Bear County, in colleges and university systems that are right here in our backyard. And so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. In a few minutes, when I go through the upcoming events, I'll talk about a very similar undertaking that A&amp;M San Antonio is going to be launching and kicking off, actually, in our district next week in just a few minutes.
Um, there are actually two public comments on my form.
All right, I'm getting the review of the Club of Comments. I'll circle back to you.
I'll wait, but I just want to let you know.
I'm done.
Yeah, just circle back and get the Club of Comments.
You want me to go ahead now?
Yeah.
Okay. I apologize. Okay, we have two public comments tonight from the same gentleman, Mr. John Holt. When will masks become optional instead of mandatory? Why are y'all forcing nine and under to wear masks when y'all say the state mandate is for 10 and older? When will we see a return to a five-day schedule? So, my kids can't sit still in class without a mask on, but if y'all can have this meeting and have people sitting here without a mask, what is the difference? It seems to me if you all are saying our kids have to wear masks all day, the least you can do is mask up for us to see y'all wearing, question mark. Thank you. I apologize.
That was it?
That was all.
Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate that. So, we for item A, right? So, let's move on to item B, personnel report.
Sir, trustees, this month's report is, as is always the case, is in your electronic packet. Be happy to get you the additional information about any activity that is in this month's personnel report. Just letting you know to get you more details.
Anybody have any questions on the personnel report? Move on to item C, upcoming events. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Trustees, also in this lady's packet, we'll look at the September and October calendar. Couple of items that I want to call your attention to there. First, in September, of course, you'll see that our UIL events have kicked off. In fact, we've got our first football scrimmage at the stadium this evening. Volleyball is also scrimmaging this evening, and you'll see throughout the calendar diving and cross-country along with what you normally see in terms of our student activities going on in the fall. In addition to that, on the 22nd, as I mentioned or alluded to a few minutes ago, A&amp;M San Antonio is going to be kicking off in an announcement here at the Performing Arts Center on Tuesday, next Tuesday at 9:30 in the morning. They're going to be announcing their Jaguar Excellence Guarantee and Achiever Promise. So, similar to the Album of Promise, which guarantees two years of college tuition paid at the Alamo Colleges, the Jaguar Promise is saying that if you graduate from a South Bear County school, high school, and you're in the academic top 10%, you get to go to A&amp;M San Antonio for free. And that is a tremendous opportunity, both together, tremendous opportunities for our students in terms of accessibility to higher education. And so, they've chosen to kick that event off here in our community. And it will benefit our students as well as the other students from high schools of the south side of Bear County. And we're really excited that there's a lot of collaboration from higher education entities and private and profit, for-profit and nonprofit organizations to support this and to sustain this over time, not only in the city but in the south part of Bear County. And again, it's tremendous opportunity for our students, and we're just happy to be a part of it, partner in both of those entities, and look forward to the opportunities it presents our students. Also, Mr. Massagut, you had a...
Yeah, I got a couple things I need to announce or forward. Trustees, everybody got one of these letters in their packet. Please fill it out, get the best option really nice, so we can finish trying to, so we can get that done. And the second thing I gotta announce is we have a virtual meeting on Tuesday, this coming up Tuesday, I believe is the 22nd. We have a virtual meeting at 3:30 PM. What is the agenda? We'll come out tomorrow.
Yeah, we got an agenda for a waiver consideration, the board to consider approving a waiver for us to send a particular waiver to the Texas Education Agency. So, we'll send that Google Meet link with the agenda posting. And our intent is that on Tuesday, the meeting will only be through virtual. We'll all get through Google Meet.
So, we need to make sure that we have more. Need to make sure that everybody either gets a message on Tuesday, confirm that you can be there 3:30 for the virtual meeting. I'll ask Dale and James to bring it to you. Did y'all hear that, Dale and Mr. Moke?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, it's virtual, so just... Right, okay. Okay, I'll try to send a reminder out Tuesday morning. And that way... Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay, also, on the 25th, we have a student holiday. It'll be a professional development day for staff. And then, on the 30th, this year's TASSTASB convention, which you guys all know is virtual. Several of you did sign up for that conference. I did as well. And so, that will kick off on the 30th and run through October 2nd. In your October calendar, early voting kicks off on the week of the 12th. And as we talked last week, the governor did extend the early voting period to Texas. And so, you'll see marked there the week of the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th. Early voting is running the course of those three weeks. The 12th is a Columbus Day holiday for students, but it is a staff development day for our employees. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the 15th.
Although it's not, you know, the grand high, it's definitely a step up, in my opinion, from Motel 6. It really gives that feel of a hotel lobby entrance. They continue their color schemes into the hallways and into the classrooms. A lot of bright colors and a lot of use of graphics or wall graphics. Another note that I wanted to point out on this slide is that we've done in small sections a product called MCT, which is marmoleum. It's an alternative to VCT. However, this is a natural product. It's about four times stronger than VCT and requires zero wax. So, it's maintenance-free for custodians. The difference also is that LBT, which is a similar product, is a little bit higher in cost, but it has a polyurethane ware layer on it. And so, it's easily scratched, and once it's scratched, it's almost, you have to replace it. So, we demoed this back there in the bond at Salado in one of our classrooms. We have some in our high-traffic areas over in maintenance. And this is our first project where we've done a lot of square footage in this product, and we're really excited on the cost savings long-term on maintenance of it and the durability. And you can see the light blue is squares just like the gray, but it also comes in rolls, which is a yellow portion. And so, the designers were able to do a lot of different patterns in the classrooms and geometric patterns and really, in their opinion, have a field day with a different color scheme that they could create. This is what they call a huddle room. CAST is really pushing the collaborative, small-group spaces. And so, previously, this was an office in a hallway. But they incorporated the CAST ideals with more graphics and the table is called a PVL, a Project-Based Learning Table. Those are throughout the CAST portion of the building and really focus on collaboration in their model. Here's another example of the use of graphics. This is a double-sided glass hallway, and they use translucent graphics to form their patterns. And depending on the time of day and the angle of the sun, you'll get different patterns throughout the day as you walk through that hall. So, it will, I'm not saying every other day it won't be the same, but throughout the day, you'll have different patterns when you walk through the hall. So, the designers were really happy about that effect as well. This is the former library, now called the Student Success Center. There's different types of furniture and for collaboration, but they also worked in some piece for some sensory blocking. So, the idea behind that is that they'll come together, they'll work together, and then, when it's time to break out and go separate, they have some sensory-blocking furniture to help the students focus. Here's another shot of the Student Success Center, another PVL table with more use of graphics and then more individual spaces. Here's a typical classroom, but each classroom has a different color scheme and a different graphics package and different colored furniture. And so, we renovated eight classrooms at the John Glenn Center for CAST just this year. And so, every room is a little bit different. So, we had some major projects going on. I think it was a good summer, and we're really proud of the products that the district received. I'll happy to answer any questions you may may have. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Moke, Mr. Tresor, y'all have any questions? No? Very nice. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. And move on to the action agenda, item A, Adjunct Facility Agreement and Resolution, Extracurricular Status of 4-H Organization, the ECHS Bear County Extension Staff. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Trustees, last month, we brought to you a very similar recommendation for the Adascosha 4-H to be considered adjunct faculty. This would be for the Bear County 4-H, for the identified staff that are qualified to be considered adjunct faculty. Again, this will allow our students that are participating in 4-H with Bear County 4-H for that to be considered a school activity, meaning that they would not be counted absent if they're involved in a Bear County 4-H activity. And again, provided that they're with one of these qualified adjunct faculty through the Bear County 4-H. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have about that.
Dale, Mr. Moke, y'all have any questions? Good?
All right. Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval that the Bear County 4-H be approved as an extracurricular activity for purposes of youth participation in projects, events, and activities, and that the Bear County Extension Director or her or his designate, who meet all necessary criteria, be recognized as adjunct staff members, and that students participating in 4-H extension educational activities be counted in attendance for foundation, school program purposes.
We have a recommendation from Superintendent to approve the Bear County 4-H extracurricular activity purposes of youth participation projects. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion for Mr. Victor Garza? Do I have a second? I have a second from Del Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item B. Salary Compensation Amendment. Mr. Scott?
Trustees, as you're very well aware, the Texas Education Agency got into a little bit of trouble with the federal government for some accountability constraints that limited, in their opinion, the percentage of students in school districts that were identified to receive special education services. And so, as a result, in recent years, we've seen across the state of Texas and here in East Central ISD, a larger number of students being evaluated for some additional services and support. Our LSSPs are Licensed School Psychologists, or the staff that primarily provide those, among other things. And so, as you can imagine, it's created a new market in the private sector and an increasing demand in school districts for their services. And so, in the last year and a half, we've struggled to keep our LSSPs because of competition in the private sector and in competition with other districts, because again, they're in very high demand. So, we did, in addition to the TASB study, we went ahead and did a local salary comparison with school districts in the county and found that our LSSPs were in the bottom third of salaries. And so, as is always the case, the board is always directed me to bring those identified salary opportunities to ensure that every employee is being paid competitively with the market. And so, that's what we're doing here tonight. We believe that our LSSPs are a little bit below market value when compared to certainly the private sector, but more importantly, with our neighboring school districts. And so, to bring us up to the middle of the pack and competitive with the market salary for LSSPs, we're considering some stipend. We'd like you to consider approving some stipend increases for our LSSPs, which would bring them in line with the market, as well as our speech pathologists, who we did something similar with a few years ago, where we also found that their salary was a little bit off pace with the local market. Be happy to answer any more questions. As far as the stipend goes, we would be starting a LSSP their first year with their base salary and an $8,000 stipend. If they stay with us, that salary, that stipend will be increased by 1,000 to 9,000. And if they stay for their third year, they can receive a $10,000 stipend. And what we have found with speech pathologists is it really enables salary to be off the table and it allowed us to retain a high percentage of our speech pathologists. And we suspect that that will have the same effect with our LSSPs, because they're very happy here, but it's hard for them to turn down, you know, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 salary increases to do the same work just around the corner. So, that's what we're bringing for your consideration this evening.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Brazil, Mr. Moki, you have any questions?
Right. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the amendment to the 2021 Salary Compensation Plan as presented.
We have a recommendation from superintendent to approve the amendment to the 2021 Salary Compensation Plan as presented. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Does he have a second? Second from Claudia Valentos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Item C, consider and take possible action to contract with Bell Excel. Mr. Scott?
Trustees, as a provision that was passed with House Bill 3, there was an option for districts to consider adding additional days to the school year. And the intent that the agency had for that was to allow for some opportunities for students to continue to get education through a longer time of the academic year. So there's multiple options. We heard from the commissioner during the COVID shutdown, the options for intercessional calendars and that sort of thing that looks more like a year-round calendar. And some districts considered and actually adopted such calendars for this year. What we're considering is looking at our summer ECISD programs and offering a continuing continuation of services that are maybe more academically focused, more robust than what we've offered in the past. So that's one thing that we've been thinking about, that we think this could be applicable to. We also believe that in an effort to be more thoughtful, have the time that we need to get good feedback from our community and from our staff, and really evaluate the needs of our students, in particular, as it relates to the impact of COVID-19 since March, as well as the impact of the large percentage of students that are choosing remote-only up until this point and that may choose remote-only instruction for the majority, if not all the school year, that we're, we're thinking that this could inform potentially a future school calendar that could look a little bit different. As you recall, the board did adopt the calendar this year and then made an amendment to that calendar to add some days into June, if in the event we need to make up some time, depending on what happens with COVID-19 this year. So along those lines, we have intended to put a formal process together throughout the year, and we're really being thoughtful, doing some deep dives into our student achievement data, our needs, getting some good input, and being very diligent in bringing forward to you for consideration when it's time, some calendar options to consider. Now, the additional school day calendar has a planning year before you can be considered for approval from the agency because it comes with some funding. You can get funded for half a day for an additional 30 days, which we currently do not get funded for. And so in the planning year, the agency will take your request and award a grant, which we've been awarded. The grant that we've been awarded is about $148,000, and a condition to that grant is that you hire a planning partner, a consultant, if you will, to help you and your committees and community work through what it might look like to consider an additional school year calendar option as a possibility. Now, they limit you to three potential vendors or partners. And so Bell Excel is one of those, and after reviewing the options, we felt like Bell Excel would be the best option to be a partner with us in the planning process. Now, the grant money the TA gives you can be used to pay for this, the cost of this partnership, and that partnership is about $61,000 of $148,000 that they give you for the planning year. Now, the important part is that at the end of this planning process, the board may decide, you know, this isn't for us. And if that's the case, we walk away and we have no strings connected, and we have no obligation to pay back any of the funds that we've used throughout the planning process. But along the way, we really feel like as an organization, we'll benefit from the very comprehensive, very thorough planning process that we're going to be going through with the partner. So we feel like that would be a benefit regardless of how we end up. In addition to that, there's going to be some opportunity for us to do some deep dives around some summer curriculum options. We in the past have written all of that curriculum each and every summer, but we feel like that will be an opportunity for us to kind of study and vet some summer programming, really targeted, really focused academic curriculum that may be beneficial for our students and for us as an organization. And we'll get some training for our staff that will be funded, that we in previous years had to either provide ourselves or not provide at all. And so all in all, we feel like it's a real win-win opportunity. Again, it's part of the process for even being considered for the additional day school year approval or authorization, and this year would be the planning year. So what the board could expect is for us to come forward in the January, February timeframe with an update about some of the things we're learning and some of the things we're considering, get some direction from the board, and then continue the work up until the point where we may be ready to bring some calendar options for the board to consider at that point. Or to say, you know, we learned what we needed to learn, and we're going to stay the course of what we've been doing and just make some adjustments there without, without this additional day option. So Dr. Fuller, is there any gaps that we need to fill in?
No, you go.
Do you have to answer any additional questions about the partnership with Bell Excel, what their role is, and why we chose Bell Excel?
Mr. Moki, Dale, you got any questions? You okay? Anybody else got any? Thank you.
All right. Mr. President, I recommend board consideration to contract with Bell Excel for the amount of $61,380 as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to consider the contract with Bell Excel for the amount of $61,381. Do I have a motion? Have a motion from Mr. Steve Bryant. Does he have a second? Have a second from Mr. Victor Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. The item that I've been waiting for, the rest of the three, four, and six have been waiting for. Item D, cancellation of November 3, 2020 trustee election, single-member districts 3, 4, and 6.
Yes, sir. During the period allowed by law for interested individuals to sign up as a candidate for a position on the Central ISD Board of Trustees for single-member districts 3, 4, and 6. We had John Massengill sign up for District 3. We had Victor Garza sign up for District 4, and Claudia Valentos sign up for District 6. At the conclusion of the time period, each of the aforementioned candidates are unopposed. So as permitted in Section 2.053A of the Texas Election Code, the Central ISD Board of Trustees may cancel the election if the candidates are unopposed, which they are. Attached is a certificate of unopposed candidates for each of these single-member districts. And based on this certification of unopposed candidates, the board has the option to cancel the trustee election for each of the single-member districts 3, 4, and 6. Be happy to answer any additional questions board may have about this matter.
Anybody, anybody have any questions? Want to get a raise?
Yes, sir. 100%.
Well, so that either says two things, that either the district and the community is very happy with us, or they just don't care. So... We have a recommendation from the superintendent to attach the order to the cancellation that would cancel the November 3, 2020 trustee election for single-member districts 3, 4, and 6. Do I have a motion? Have a motion? Do we have a motion from Claudia Valentos? Have a second? Second from Dale Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Awesome. Motion carries. Yay. All right. Consent agenda. Would anybody like anything from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Don't move.
Have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Does he have a second? Have a second from Mr. Steve Bryant. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Adjournment. Have a motion?
Don't move.
Have a motion and a second. We are adjourned via announcement.